Good evening, welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen regularly scheduled for September 14th, 2015. The first item that we have is the signing of the warrant.
Move second.
Motion made in seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. We have approval of meeting minutes, August 31st, 2015. Is there a motion? Motion made?
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That too is unanimous. The next item that we have is invitation to speak. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board on an item not on the agenda, or maybe even on the agenda? Come on down, Mike. Yep, have you sit?
I haven't seen you.
Yeah, can you just slide over a little, maybe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I won't be long. Take your time.
Okay. My understanding is that there's been some discussion with respect to the issue down in the Beach Street area with truck traffic and vibration of sorts.
Okay.
What I would suggest is that trucks going by any street, any house, do cause a certain amount of vibration. What I would not like to see is more taxpayers' dollars spent to, on redundant engineering, only to find out that, yes, there is some vibration. And then what do you do with it? What do you do with those findings? You have those findings. You know, excuse me, don't go fishing if you don't like fish, as they say. In any case, what I would suggest is that most of those homes in that area have what I refer to as old stone foundations, which are inherently subject to the effects of any kind of even mild vibration. I would suggest that maybe some of the homeowners down there have their own foundations inspected for, to determine the structural integrity of their own foundations. Because those stone foundations, they do loosen over years, just from natural occurrences, not necessarily truck vibration. And any kind of mild vibration is then compounded because of the lack of structural integrity in those old foundations. So I would submit to you that maybe we suggest they have their own foundations looked at and inspected. Rather than spend taxpayers' dollars to do an engineering study of any type to come up with the same finding.
Well, just so you know, on this issue, just so you know, Mike, there's been no decision, even discussion, from this board about doing such a study. This was brought up by Selectman Kincaid as a result of some complaints that were received. He was given some past work that had been done on the issue, and then we're waiting for him to come forward with a proposal as to what he'd like to see done down there. Now, you more or less hit the nail on the head in terms of this vibration, because when we looked at it a number of years ago through Mike Santura, the problem that you had is there are no standards. So, and there are very few entities and companies that actually do this. I think Bill came in contact with one, gave that name off to the town engineer, but at that time, the town engineer's opinion was without any type of standards, you know, you're dealing with, I guess, some sort of a number out of context. What do you do with it? So that was the position that the board took some time ago until Selectman Kincaid brought it up, and like I said, we're still waiting for proposals to what he'd like to see going forward. So that's kind of where we're at on that.
Yeah, I don't know how many written complaints you received from the people in that area, but having said that, I'm not completely heartless. One of the things I might suggest, and it's something that other towns are doing, as it relates to, because I also heard the term "jake breaking" come up in your discussions. Now, jake breaking, I could spend all night explaining the technical details of jake breaking.
Please don't.
I won't, but I'll do it in one sentence.
Okay.
Jake breaking, the jake brake is a device that is installed on big rigs mostly, or big diesel trucks. What it does is, in layman's terms, that even I can understand, when the trucker takes his foot off the throttle and engages the jake brake, the exhaust valves on the engine open during the compression cycle of the cylinder, releasing compressed air, which turns the engine into a power-producing engine, from a power-producing engine, into a power-robbing engine, and essentially stopping, slowing the vehicle. Now, this is done because the truckers like to save their regular brakes, and so they use this jake brake. Now, this jake brake, when it's applied, does make a significant amount of noise, and could be construed as a rumble, if you will. What many towns are doing, and you've probably seen this in your travels, I know I have, they are creating what they call quiet zones, or no jake brake zones. This is done simply by placing a small sign, similar to the size of a no parking sign, 12 by 18 maybe, in the area where you would like to stop the trucks from jake breaking. Some towns have gone as far as creating town ordinances or bylaws, bylaws, preventing jake breaking, thereby stopping it throughout the town, because if you stop it in the Beach Street area, tomorrow you're going to turn around and have somebody say, "Wait a minute, they jake brake on my street too." So you might want to consider creating a bylaw prohibiting jake breaking throughout the town. Or, and I did, I did bring a couple of samples of some signage, simple signage, if I could approach, I could.
Sure, absolutely, yeah, sure, yeah.
If I can, if I can approach, if I'm able to.
Oh, yes.
But anyway, you know, these are simple signs that you see in other towns. Now, engine braking is the same, that's what they call jake braking.
Uh-huh.
Very technical thing. Even half the truckers don't even understand the technical aspect of it, they just know it works, when they flip the switch, it works. So it is a technical device.
I don't know, Dan, if you can pick these up on the screen or anything, but this is...
My point is that that may serve to appease, to some extent, the neighbors down there, if you can at least stop the jake breaking, because I think that was one of the things that might have been bothering them down there.
Well, the jake breaking, you know, to my memory was, I never even heard that term, was never brought up in all the correspondence we have, but it was brought up by Will the last time, so I think that might be something new.
Okay, well, once again, it's something that you might want to consider.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mike.
If I may continue. I have listened to various Board of Selectmen makeups struggle, if I may use the word, struggle, with the double pole issue in this town. What I'm suggesting is that you, you know, exercise your authority pursuant to Article 19 of the Town of Milford's general bylaws, which provide for fines of up to $200 for every double pole that is still in place within 60 days after it has been, after the new pole has been placed. It also provides for fining of up to $200 if the utility company does not notify your board with a five-day window within the 60-day period, at which point that double pole will be removed. My experience has showed me that companies and people respond a little quicker if the failure to respond has a negative effect on their wallet.
Yeah, I think, let me just stop, stop you there, because, and Rick, I don't know if you have information on, but that was litigated, that issue was litigated, not specifically about our bylaw, I believe, with the general laws. And it's my memory that it's not enforceable, and I'm not sure if that was case law that came down, or if there was a statute that followed that, but that was one of the first things that we looked at many years ago. And of course, other communities have tried it too, and the fine is not something that we can do.
Okay, I took the liberty of meeting with town council.
Yep.
Who told me that Article 19 is still in full effect, and there's no reason that we cannot...
Our own town, our own town bylaw?
Yes, our town council, our town council.
Right, right, right.
Yes.
Well, then I don't know how that would conflict with, you know, my recollection of what happened at the state level, but...
If nothing else, even though I think that they know you're serious about the double poles, when they actually get fines in the mail, they will certainly know how serious you are. And I think it can't hurt.
Well, what we've been doing, you know, is we've been working cooperatively, in fact, I was just at a public session on the Algonquin Gas Line, that actually all of us were there, and ran into Bob Russell, who was the coordinator for National Grid. Now, the double poles numbers have come down from upwards of 200-plus to about 50 or 60 so. And I had a conversation with Bob, and he indicated that his company is remaining vigilant to get these poles down, and actually gave great credit to the town administrator, Rick Velani, for improving those numbers by instituting a team approach with all of the interested parties. So we've made progress on that. You know, I'll have to talk to Jerry again about the fine, because, you know, my memory is, you know, there was either state law or case law, there was something that took that out of the mix. Because that was one of the things, very first things we looked at about 15 years ago. So I'll have to look up on that.
Okay, I believe that original bylaw, Article 19, was passed at the annual town meeting, I believe, in 1970 or '71. Section four of that bylaw, which provides for the fining, I believe was passed at a special town meeting, I want to say 1989. Please don't hold me to those dates.
No, no, I understand, yeah.
It was somewhere in that range.
And I don't know if the town bylaw is still valid with whatever occurred at the state level, whether it was legislation or case law, I can't remember it specifically, but I know that there was a conflict. Because we have to repeal, in fact, there's going to be an article on the upcoming town meeting, we have to repeal the sex offender bylaw that we have, because it's found unconstitutional. So, you know, things change, and, you know, times come, but...
Well, I came across, and I said, gee, you know, we need to get, we need to be firm with these people.
Oh.
Because while they are improving, from my perspective, they're walking all over you, with all due respect. You know, yes, they are improving, but how many years has this taken?
Absolutely.
And there's no reason for it, no reason for it at all. In any case...
I don't disagree with you on that, Mike.
Just forward one step. Relative, I heard you discussing the carnival issue, maybe last meeting or the meeting before? And I know that you asked for and received an accord insurance form with Town of Milford as the certificate holder. My experience with mitigating and insurance, third-party insurance claims over the years, I have learned that just being named as the certificate holder really doesn't do much for you. What you must have on that insurance certificate is the Town of Milford named as additionally insured as their interests may appear. And the language is very strict, it must have that specific language on that accord form. That way, if and when, I shouldn't say if and when, if something does happen, when you do battle this, go for an insurance claim, having those, holding that certificate with those words on there, having Milford named as additionally insured as their interests may appear, you will breeze right through it, and you will win almost every claim filed. Anyway, that's been my experience with insurance claims over the years. Only 10 more items, and I'll be out of here. No, 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 no.
This is a virtual potpourri of town items.
You know, you meet, what, twice a year, so I have to get them in when I can, when I can. Anyway...
I think we meet more than that.
I have neither received a response to, nor am I aware of any discussion that your board had with respect to my correspondence dated August 20, 2015, with a request as outlined in the letter. So I just wanted to basically confirm that you did receive my request, and...
What request is that, Mike? I'm sorry.
I did bring copies for you, if you would like them. Get up again, but that's okay.
Yeah, sure, sure.
And while you're looking at that, I would, my apologies if I appeared to be a little sarcastic in that letter, but due to my limited command of the English language, I sometimes have to resort to mild sarcasm just to get my point across. So I do apologize if it appears to be a little sarcastic.
I guess just for folks reading, watching at home, this is a letter that was addressed to the boards. "It is becoming increasingly difficult for me to walk outside, get in my car, start my car, drive to the other side of town, find a parking space, shut my car off, get out of my car, cast my vote, get back in my car, start my car, drive all the way home, shut my car off, get out of my car and go back to my house. Seems like a bit much to ask of anyone just to vote. Therefore, I'm requesting that a polling location be reestablished in precincts seven and eight within walking distance of my house. If you have any questions or require additional information regarding this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me at any time." Well, I mean, I didn't get back to you, Mike, because I was on the short end of that vote. But, I mean, I don't know, I'll let my colleagues address it if you'd like to. I think it went to all of us.
No, I think I got it in the spirit it was intended.
As did I.
I don't think it's going to happen, Mike. I think you're still going to have to...
I wasn't really looking for an explanation, in fact, I was just trying to confirm that you, in fact, did receive my request.
I did receive it, yes.
By the way, for the purposes of that letter, I consider walking distance to be a half to three-quarter mile. And as you may be aware, we had a polling location in precincts seven and eight that was taken away from the voters in precincts seven and eight. So that was, my request is to reestablish that. And I know you can read, I'm just... But anyway, once again, I apologize for it being maybe slightly sarcastic. But as I said, I, my command of the English language is extremely limited, so sometimes I do resort to that.
Well, don't sell yourself short.
In any case, thank you for the time again.
All right, thank you.
See you next year.
Thank you, Mike.
Why do I think you'd be here before that? Mike, be careful, take it easy. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? If not, we'll move on to our scheduled appointments. We have the veterans' agent, along with the assistant, Janet Flamier, to make a very nice presentation to us, so I don't want to steal anyone's thunder. I will turn it right over to John and Janet.
Good evening, gentlemen, and if I may, for the record, I'd like to read the memo I sent you. "September 14, 2015. Dear Board of Selectmen, we would like to present for your consideration the replacement purchase of approximately 90 wooden veteran square signs currently located at various intersections throughout the town with metal ones. The cost of this purchase would be approximately $6,500, which includes the price of the sign and special mounting bracket. We have for your preview both the existing wooden and a sample of the proposed metal sign. Your consideration would be greatly appreciated. Sincerely, John Pillar, Director, Janet Flamier, Assistant." Do you want us to...
Yeah, I mean, just, maybe just by way of a little bit of background.
Talk to us what's happening.
Okay.
Yeah, I was down in the veterans' office, it was about a month or so ago, John, and you pulled me in, and indicated that you were working on these signs because of the problems that you were having with some of the older wooden signs, in terms of durability and that sort of thing. And you were investigating this opportunity with a new metal sign. And I wanted to make sure that you came before us, so that everyone could see these, and look for your plan going forward.
Okay. We have approximately 85 to 90 of these throughout Milford, this style, and over the years, through...
Dan, can you, excuse me, Dan, can you pick this up? I don't know what camera you have on. You see.
Okay, I'll give you this.
The old ones?
How's that? So this is the new one that you're proposing, which is a metal sign. It's lighter, but seems a lot more durable, obviously colorful, you have the flags emblazoned right on the decal, and you've got a little bit more information on it too, don't you, in terms of the veteran and so forth?
The sign in memory of the war that they served in and the branch of service.
So that's the old, and then this is the sign here that we have up there right now. So, I mean, this is nice, but it's wooden, and it has a shelf life, I guess. And of course, trying to replace them and so forth can be an issue. So you'll be looking to replace these wooden signs with this new metal.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And this is the this is the bracket that this will go into, and it'll go over the current black pole.
A little over here, a little. You have to pull it more to the center, John, unless he's... Okay. Hey, you're on.
I ain't thought I don't have to come to these meetings that often.
You're on, but you're blocked by the poles, so, there you go, there you go, all right, there you go, beautiful, that's perfect.
And with the wooden sign, the bracket is much bigger. And what they have to do is drill holes, they have to drill holes through this in order to mount it, and then it goes on the existing poles.
And John, maybe while you're here, and Janet, maybe could you give everyone just kind of a brief summary of what these are? I know we've talked before, everyone kind of sees the signs, but I don't know that everyone in town really understands or appreciates the significance, how, you know, a sign is chosen, the location in relation to the name. So could you give us just kind of a brief summary of what your office does in relation to these signs?
I'll let Jan tell you what she knows about them, and if there's anything that I'd, you know, I'd like to add to it after she's finished with it.
Historically, the signs are for people, men and women that were killed in action. Also Medal of Honor recipients, and what's the third?
Well, when I was appointed, you know, in 1990, I was informed that these were in honor of KIA veterans. And then, along the way, we came upon a couple of living veterans that were honored with one of the signs. And I can't give you the history of how that was allowed, but there are a couple of signs in town of people who came back from the war, and then later on were honored with one of these. And I believe it was because of a decoration that they received, or an award. They go back to the World War I. We have, these are approximate figures, we have 19 World War I, 55 World War II, five Korea, six Vietnam, and one Iraq.
And one Spanish-American.
Goes back further than World War I.
And then the location, I mean, you don't just put them anywhere, you try to relate...
Well, everything that's there was inherited by us. And it was our understanding that they were placed in the neighborhood that the family lived in. And then I also heard in certain instances that the family made requests that they be moved further away from their neighborhood, because they didn't want to be reminded
It was painful for the parents.
of the casualty. So historically, you know, we've all been in town for a long time, and I think where the signs are currently located, those families are no longer living in those areas. So on occasion, when the highway department reports that a sign gets knocked over because of a snowplow, or wherever it is, we try to locate the family and ask them if they would like another location. But I think as time goes on, we're going to find that it doesn't have any connection to where they're located.
Great, wonderful. Let me turn it over to the board, questions? Bill?
You know, I see the expenditure 65, well, let me first start. You know, I don't think we get a chance to see you enough, you and Janet. And so, you know, the work that you do on behalf of the veterans, and working with veterans who have special needs or special requests, or have difficulty navigating through the federal government system, is something that's brought up to me. I don't say it enough, and I just want to make sure that at least when we have this opportunity, that I appreciate, let you know that we appreciate everything that you do on behalf of our veterans.
And we're grateful for the support that we get.
We also hope that there are no more signs to ever go up, but I think that's wishful thinking sometimes. The expenditure is to get the signs, and is it, your understanding that a highway surveyor would then put them up under the normal course of doing the work? Okay. So you don't need a different budget for that, I just wanted to make sure, so that we didn't cut it short. Yeah, personally, I like the new sign. I think it provides greater information. I like the touch of the American flags on there. American flag's been under attack quite a bit lately, and I think it's good to have it prominent and remind people that those people, those that lost their lives, did so in support of that and defense of that. I think it shows greater respect, in my opinion, as well. And it is New England, right, so that we would expect wood to deteriorate easy. We've all got wooden mailboxes and wooden things, and the maintenance there. If it lasts longer, shows brighter, is larger, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't want to support this. It's the right thing to do, and Milford's long looked after its veterans and respected our veterans, so, you know, I would be in support of what you're doing here.
Thank you very much.
Will?
Yes, I'll echo again what Bill mentioned, and also that, obviously, you two do great work, and you need to be commended for that. The new signs look really sharp, and I'm glad you brought Elias, because I just spoke about the last meeting, about the successful bike run, and what a wonderful family he has, and you were there, and you don't usually miss... If you're not somewhere, then you're out of town, because every veteran get-together or anything I've been to, and lucky enough to have been invited to, you've been there. And that speaks volumes, but that one hits close to home. Thank you.
Great, yeah, no, I, you know, like we talked about about a month or so ago, I think it's a great idea. I think they'll really add a lot to the town. You know, like you had talked about, you know, you have more information on there, and I know you made decisions on what information to include or not include. And the flags that are now permanently on the sign, you won't have to go around and put the actual physical flag on the wooden sign that, you know, sometimes doesn't last so well.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, if you don't mind.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we support the $6,500 request for the improved signs, and that those funds come from the biom measure TIF. I think we've got sufficient funds there, I don't think we need to go to town meeting. And I think the funds are there now as part of community improvement, I don't see why we wouldn't just do it right away.
Okay, I mean, I thought it would be a town meeting article, but if you, if it's a pleasure of the board to spend the biom measure money on it, I mean, I suppose, you know, six here, half a dozen there. You know, I just thought, you know, I communicated John to come forward, and, you know, the board, I'm sure, would support a town meeting article. But if the motion is to take it from the biom measure money, what's the balance in there, Rick, now? Do we know?
Uh, it, it, it's well sufficient to cover that.
Okay.
I don't have the exact balance, but, you know, it would cover it and then some.
Second?
I'll second that, that's, that's fine with me.
Any more discussion? Not? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Great, thank you very much.
All right.
See you again.
So you're all set.
Thank you.
pave the way. Nice, nice work, Janet and John. Have a good night.
Good enough.
You're all set?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good job.
Go easy on the next pillar.
He's looking for a little bit more money than you.
It's not gonna go so easy, John. You better stick around.
All right, we have Zach Taylor, the Finance Director, and Chris Piller, our Treasurer. And, um, gotta borrow a little bit of money, guys?
We do. Good evening, gentlemen.
Just a bit, huh?
Just a little bit this time. So we're obviously here to talk about the woodland ban. They called three of you were at the Finance Committee meeting on last Wednesday, so gonna be a little bit of a repeat here. But, um, the project's well underway. What I did was I combined a balance sheet and an income statement. And in doing so, I find it hard to believe that we're in our fourth year of this, which is pretty crazy since we originally put it together as the feasibility study back in two thousand thirteen, so, pretty crazy. But now, right now, we're rarely seeing some big bills come down the line. This year, this fiscal year alone, we're expected to pay forty-two million dollars in bills.
Ouch.
Yeah, it's a lot of money. And, um, we are getting timely, I'd like to see timelier, but we're getting timely reimbursements from the MSBA. So, uh, we obviously took that into consideration when we decided to, um, go and get with bond council and decide what we're gonna borrow. So, um, not too long ago, we were in front of you, Kelly Capice and I, on, um, doing the second ban, which was six million dollars. We did that back in May. Now, we did six at the time to really get us through year end as to make sure that we had adequate funds and not have a hit against free cash. And, um, we were able to do so. So quickly into the fiscal year, we realized, or we, we expected that some large bills were gonna come down the line. But, uh, we also knew that we could maintain a little bit of a cash flow, but nothing to the tune of forty-two million dollars. So, um, somewhat of crunch time and you have a vote tonight to take. So we decided to, about a month ago, decided to go out and decided seventeen million was a good figure. Um, again, considering what we had already borrowed and considering what the anticipated, fifty-nine point nine percent from the MSBA. I have some stats if you'd like me to go over. So far, year-to-date in the entire project, we've expended fifteen million dollars. Again, just the beginning. So per month, we could be seeing anywhere from four to five million dollars a month right through until the completion of the project. Year-to-date so far, we have received from the MSBA three point seven million. Now, if you're doing math quick in your head, that does not come out anywhere near fifty-nine percent. However, we do have an expected three point two million that hopefully will arrive any day now. The state is very thorough when they're looking at all the documentation submitted. They go into invoices, cancel check, the whole nine yards, so, uh, again-
And Zach, if I can just stop you there, when, when you say the fifty-nine percent reimbursement, that's not necessarily dollar for dollar on the total gross amount. Because I know when those charts come in, they, you know, just, they, they delete this item, delete that item.
Correct.
So, so the percentage, if you looked at the reimbursement to the overall cost, would be something less than the fifty-nine percent because there's only certain items that they look to reimburse.
Correct. It's also a per square foot cap. So what theoretically could happen is when we get towards the end of the project, we could have hit our threshold. And then dollar for dollar, the town is on the hook for the remaining amount. But, um, I have a little chart here of what we actually submitted, what was actually eligible and what was ineligible. And thus far, out of twelve million we submitted, there's only been eighty-three thousand that has been considered ineligible. And to my understanding, the project manager is working on resubmitting that 'cause in their opinion, it is eligible. But, uh, to that point, yes, you are one hundred percent correct. There will be times we come across certain invoices, certain aspects that just simply won't be eligible. As well as the maximum cap, once we do hit it, then, then it's cut off right there.
Yeah, so I think, you know, when that percentage gets tossed out, because, you know, the overall big numbers there, that's sixty million, you know, I, I think it's, you know, for, for folks trying to follow this project along, I think we have to be realistic in what they can expect for a percentage reimbursement, which is a bit less than the fifty-nine.
Correct. When we, when we first, uh, came in here discussing it back three, four years ago, when we were doing our projections on what kind of impact this may or may not have on stabilization, we actually used a figure of thirty-four million, which is significantly higher than a, than a fifty-nine percent reimbursement. Uh, I certainly do not think it'll come in at that figure, but at the time, it was like, well, better safe than sorry. Let's use something that theoretically could happen. So, uh, do I think vice versa? Will it be exactly fifty-nine percent? No, I definitely don't. But we're thinking it's somewhere in the range of twenty-eight million. So that's gonna kind of come hand in hand with the second part of what we want to talk about tonight. So tonight, we're seeking a vote for seventeen million, which, uh, Chris actually awarded on last Wednesday. He'll go over some of the bids that did come in. I'll also give him an opportunity to discuss the figures, which were fantastic. We got a really good deal. But, um, that particular ban, bond anticipation note, will come due on July first of, uh, two thousand sixteen. And we also have the six million that we had signed up for, um, back in May. So that's gonna come due in May of, um, sixteen as well. So what we have to do is take both of them long-term. At the same time, we're probably gonna go to where we expect the project to come in. So currently, we're looking at around twenty-eight million. It's certainly our plan, once we get into the new calendar year, to have a meeting with the project manager and call in, um, everybody to get a real solid understanding of exactly what we feel will be safe to do. The other thing to consider is right now, we're, not just Milford, but most communities are getting huge premiums. So that's something to keep in the back of our mind as well, whether we want to take the premium, apply it directly to the project, which may mean we want to borrow twenty-six million and get a two million dollar premium. And it sounds crazy, but that's how high the premiums are right now. So we're still in the planning stages on step two, which we'll be taking this long-term. But the point being is we are definitely gonna be taking the majority of this project long-term at the end of this fiscal year, which will mean FY seventeen, it's time to stop paying the long-term debt and long-term interest. And, um, we'll realize that over the next twenty years. So, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Chris, who I feel has picked up on this, jumped right in very quickly. I think he's doing a fantastic job and he's got a real great understanding of where we're at with this project as well as the whole process. So he'll go over some of the bids and what it's gonna mean for the budget.
Thanks, Zach.
So we have three bidders for the seventeen million. The lowest one, we awarded it to JP Morgan. They came in at a two percent coupon rate with a premium of two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. We estimate that the cost of getting that ban is gonna be about thirty-five thousand dollars.
That's the issuance cost?
Yeah, issuance cost. So that's gonna leave us with about two hundred thousand in premium. The interest on the loan that comes due in July is gonna be about two hundred and sixty-seven thousand. So we can apply the premium to that and the town will be on, on the hook for the rest for about sixty-seven thousand. The other two bids, um, they had the same coupon rate of two percent, had lower premiums. So when, as we went over the numbers, that made JP Morgan the best fit. The net interest cost for JP Morgan was point two three seven percent, followed by point three oh two for TD Securities. And Eastern Bank came in at point three five nine. So, we, I thought that JP Morgan was best and awarded it with the advisement of bond council.
And just to put it in perspective, that's two tenths of one percent on seventeen million, which is tremendous. Bond council expected that we would have looked at something like three point five. So, uh, we're very pleasantly surprised and, uh, I think, uh, I'm very happy about it. Now that interest, when it comes due, will be paid out of the general fund. It's actually coming due on seven one. So all we'll most likely do is encumber the funds from, um, FY sixteen and again, use the premium as well. And we'll take care of it when it, when it comes due.
Okay, let me turn it over. Uh, Bill, questions, comments?
Uh, just a few comments, I think. You know, first of all, how do I best describe it? We, we've talked about, and we've heard from auditors each year, about Milford's financial position. So the, the ability to go out and bond seventeen million dollars on, on a two percent note is, uh, pretty significant. And it, it, it speaks to our overall general health as a community and our, our bond rating, for which both of you have a great deal to do with. And I know it's gotta be a pleasure when you're going out looking to fill short-term, uh, cash flow needs. When you go out and bond something like this, at this, at this type of favorable rate, that's, that's gotta feel pretty good. And, uh, your numbers look good, solid behind you. That's a result of a lot of people working hard. Department heads, you know, the chief is staying behind you. He's turned over significant amounts of money back to free cash. He's utilized and worked with other departments to help when their budget was short. It's just a result of a lot of good things happening. And, and here's where we see it net out, in my opinion. Because when the outside community says, okay, we're gonna let you borrow seventeen million dollars and, and here's, here's the cost of borrowing, and you look at, uh, double A bond rating, they can get you rates like that, that's pretty impressive. If, if I'm not mistaken, when we went out to the community and anticipated, uh, and talked about the anticipated costs, we had to estimate what the future interest payments might be. And I think we estimated somewhere to four, four to five percent. So these dollars are coming in significantly less. And I think, uh, being on the Woodland, uh, um, School Building Committee, I don't think there's intention to go over that budget. And I think much of the unanticipated, uh, costs that we, we, there's just no way to prepare for and that's what's under the ground, has already been realized and understood. So, uh, that's not to say there isn't something in the future, um, but we're, we're very cautiously optimistic as a committee. I know Rick's on it as well, uh, that there shouldn't be a great deal. But we anticipated notes much higher than this when we went out to the community and talked about it, uh, what the cost of borrowing would be. So it's great to see it come in less. It's nice to have both of you representing the community as we go out and look for those bonds. I know that you do so professionally and, uh, hopefully with all that financial support behind you, you, you can do so confidently. Thank you very much. This is very clear.
Uh, Will?
Thank you. Uh, great job, gentlemen. I, I don't have any questions.
Okay. So Zach, you're obviously pleased with these numbers?
Very much so, yeah.
Good job.
Thank you.
So the vote that, uh, we're going to need is listed on the Town Administrator's Summary under C two.
I've got it. Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a, a motion to approve the sale of seventeen million dollars. Uh, two percent general obligation bond anticipation notes. The notes of the town dated September eighteenth, twenty fifteen, payable July first, twenty sixteen to JP Morgan Securities LLC at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of two hundred thirty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars.
Sure, second?
Seconded.
Seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Seventeen mil, just like that.
Seventeen mil.
There you go, huh? How's that?
I'm sure he stays in the country.
Well, it's a good job and, uh, keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the scheduled appointments. We'll move on to the Town Administrator's Report. Oh, Chief is here, raising his hand.
Sorry.
Yes, yes. You're called on. What's-
I told seven thirty.
Go to new business?
No, we can, if you don't mind going out of water.
Come here or... I, I'm sorry, I didn't know you-
Oh, happy-
Oh, okay. Well, hey, always good to see ya.
We can do seventeen million like that? We can do twenty-five dollar parking tickets, hopefully, quicker.
Oh, boy, what a beauty.
I'll tell ya.
All right, what do we got?
Calling me with the boys. He's gotta do my mortgage.
Yeah.
At two percent. Um, I, I sent to the board a, a recommendation that we take the wind to parking ban and change it?
Yeah, so let's see, we have that, uh, in fact, we got a couple of things from you, F two and F three. So let me just go to that for a second, Tom. Hold on one sec. Okay.
So, there's, I took a look at, Son of Franklin several years ago moved to a different, uh, when, when the bylaws were created, not only here, the traffic regulations, not only here, but in other cities and towns, where you would regulate from December first to March fifteenth, no overnight parking, midnight to six AM. It was done because there was no other mechanism to get information out to the public when, when a storm was impending or... I mean, now, we get weathered, all of us, on our smartphones. You, you can't turn on a TV station. They'll go all day long and let you know when things are coming. We have monitoring systems through Scott, through the Fire Department. That's why I didn't subscribe. I use theirs. So, and taking a look at it, you know, and I, I watched Franklin and I watched Franklin and it's worked. For me, I started to question, why are we giving people twenty-five dollar parking tickets when we have a mild winter? There, there's, there's nothing on the roadway. There's nothing impeding anything when we can do as they do. And as you see on all those little bylines on TV, you know, no parking in Milford from this time to that time. I can send out messages now, connect CTY instantaneously. I can, the entire town within eleven minutes, twelve minutes, uh, or less, to include texts, emails, cell phones, the rest. So, uh, just in looking at it, it, it came down really to a, I think, the prior regulations or the present regulations kind of became antiquated. Facebook, Twitter, we get information out now instantaneously. So my recommendation to the board is that we create a regulation that deals with emergency parking bans. The advantage is, it's not just winter. And we have microbursts that come through. We've had that experience. We've had threatened hurricanes with, uh, you know, where trees are down on roads. Where I could segment even neighborhoods and say, look, in this neighborhood, please take your vehicles off the street because we have to get in there and cut those trees. We have to be able to get emergency vehicles in there. As I said, to get information out, you know, Kevin Rudden and, and this young lad here from the Milford Daily News bother me every day. So you, you can get information to them instantaneously. We have their cell numbers. We have their work numbers. It's that quick. My recommendation is to allow residents to park when conditions allow. What I've added here, though, is if we tell you it's an emergency and you can't park, it's not just a twenty-five dollar ticket. Now Scott already has the ability to remove vehicles, to do plowing. I'm adding, I have the ability, the police do, so we can work with him to accomplish that. So it's not, we need the superintendent or one of the plow operators to say, please take this vehicle. No. We told you, don't park there. Don't park there. Park it in the lot and then we'll tell you when you can't park in the lot. And we can send out the information the exact same way. And this covers that. It covers any time of the year, regardless of the emergency. And we're safe. What it eliminates is people getting tickets night after night after night. There are homes here, right over here, Winter Street. I, I know two homes, there's no driveway. Every winter, they do their best to work with the priest at Saint Mary's, who's gracious enough. And, and, and he's trying to keep his law clear to, to allow them so that they don't get a twenty-five dollar ticket every day. So my thing is to avoid that conflict with the residents. I, I don't think it impacts, uh, impacts on the town economically. It, it's, the money's so minute. It cuts out aggravation at the selectmen's office and the police station to no end. That twenty-five dollar ticket is about twenty-five thousand dollars worth of someone that's very angry. So, I, I think, you know, I've looked at Franklin and, and some other communities, they say it works. And Franklin's had no aggravation whatsoever. They can get information out to people. They know an impending storm is coming the next day. Now, you may have those times where you have an emerg- Now, you may have those times where you have an emergency and you have to say to people, no, within the next hour, you have to on this street or that street, you need to move these vehicles. And I appreciate, you know me, I appreciate the fact that someone might not be around, they might have gone away and the rest. We'll just move their vehicle so we can deal with the emergency. You know, a tree down, very large, like when we had that microburst. So, very much like the regulation we passed where it said, I have to post twenty-four hours before you can. If you remember, Brian, you raised that, how do people get noticed then? So we said, yeah, twenty-four hours notice, we'll post it. If they're gonna do paving or they're gonna do something like that, then we'll post it. In an emergency, we get it. You know we get it. So I think snowstorms, we can plan. We can six hours before, twelve hours before, you know, three days before now, they tell you something's coming. So we can take a good hard look a day before and say, storm's gonna hit us. You know, and if it bypasses us, great, you eliminate the emergency. But you can say to people, no, you can't park on the road this night or this day. Park in one of our lots and then please move when we, Scott notifies me, which he does regularly, to move vehicles from the lot so we can do the lot. So I think it treats the residents respectfully. I think the technology is there, and I think it's right for the town.
I'm glad you came, Tom. I meant to call you on this over the weekend. I just didn't get a chance to. As I look back on the paperwork I had on this, we last dealt with this, it looks like in two thousand and six.
Yes.
And I'm trying to get a sense, because I didn't really remember totally. But right now, okay, currently, there's an exemption if you wanted to pay a hundred dollar fee?
Yes, and in two thousand and six, well, we built in, we're people who had no space at all. In those same conditions.
Yeah.
There's nothing on the ground, there's nothing to impede plowing or clearing or taking care of public safety. We said to them, all right, we'll let you pay us a hundred dollars. So they're gonna save a hundred dollars.
Okay, so that's, was, is still being implemented?
It's still in the present regs, yes.
Okay.
And that's one of the things we did in two thousand and six. The other thing we did in two thousand and six is we look at the ADA, Americans Disability Act. And we said, okay, home care workers, we'll give you that same sticker for free.
That was.
And we're saying that here too.
Yeah.
We're saying, look, we recognize the fact that you're in there taking care of someone, you can't just walk out the door. And there may not be a space in this, you know, and we'll work around you. And I've worked with Scott, talked to Scott, and we do, we work around them. We'll plow around them, we'll have a cop go down, get the keys, we move the vehicle. Then we plow out where the vehicle was. So we work around, we're talking about half a dozen vehicles that deal with home care, health, where someone is in dire straits. So, or hospice. So we work with them, we'll give them the stickers. The only other ones we run into is periodically, I had people that work from the crime lab, state police, they have these vehicles. So those vehicles too, we tell, you know, they have space for two, and the state gives them a state police vehicle, where do you put it? Again, we give them the sticker and then we work with them. And we'll call them and say, look, trying to move the vehicle up two spaces and we'll plow around. We'll take out where you were. So the road gets plowed, things get taken care of. All in all, we're talking about, that occurs in about fifteen occurrences during a major storm. It's minute. We have all their plate numbers, we have all their contact information, we have backup contact information. So it really has been a non-issue for us. And Scott, which, that's important.
Okay, let me turn it over to the board for questions. Bill?
Yeah, to me, this is a lot kinder for the residents and it's the direction we ought to go. And as you said, the last time we looked at this in two thousand and six, if we look at what, you know, technology has advanced since then, and your ability to communicate almost real time, virtually real time, with many of the residents in the community. I remember, so that said, I remember at the time, it wasn't always the vehicle that was parked in the road. The complaints we were getting were from the downstream neighbor who didn't get their driveway plowed because the neighbor had a car in the road. Right? And that's always been one of the big complaints. And if, through your benchmarking, through Franklin, because this is never a revenue generator, and I agree with you. This should, we shouldn't look at tickets ever as a revenue generator. So I agree with you and I think the grief and the bad will that we create in issuing tickets, especially some of the parking tickets, you're following the bylaws, right? You're doing your job, you're following the regulations and I get that. But I think you present a reasonable solution in today's environment with today's technology and our ability to communicate with people. And so I'm much more appreciative of this, especially in this day and age, that we try this approach. And like anything, this is, you know, our regulations are a work in progress. They advance with technology, they're modified as required, and this seems like the right approach to go. And you have benchmark information. The only thing, the only question I had is, are towing vehicles emergency vehicles? I know we've dealt with that in other occasions, but tow trucks? Okay, good.
No, it's, it has to be registered to a police department, fire department, or EMS.
Okay.
Because the board made it loud and clear in the bylaw, that's what you do clearly is emergency vehicle. So, no, it's registered to a municipal or state police agency or federal agency that's law enforcement. Those are public safety vehicles, EMS, and then anything else, no.
Yeah.
Same with the home care, health, you know, or people delivering oxygen to someone and the rest. Believe me, you're gonna have to show me.
Yeah, so just my opinion, Mr. Chairman, and for the benefit of the chief, I'm strongly in favor of taking this approach. It seems like the right thing. And I think we ought to move forward with it.
Okay. Will?
Yes. Chief, maybe I'm the odd man out here. I do have some concerns with this. When it first, when I first picked up my packet and I read it to me, I was like, oh, okay. Didn't think about it again. Then I got one call today and a couple valid points, and the gentleman came here earlier just to chat. And between the two, there were some, at least valid questions, I thought. What about, you know, in our more downtown congested areas, whether it's Main Street or Side Streets, people with language barriers, non-native speakers, people that may be, maybe one of the few populations that maybe aren't on any of these social medias or, I mean, I know when you send out a thing, my cellphone rings, we get email, the house phone rings. A lot of people don't even have landlines anymore. So those things kind of came to mind. And you already do a good job of taking care of the exceptions. Whether you charge them a hundred dollars or not, that was decided a long time ago. But you do a good job of taking care of those exceptions. So I guess I'm just not sure, even after us chatting, what we're actually trying to fix. And if something does come in and rather it being two inches, we get two feet of snow, which might be rare, but what if we can't get people, I mean, are we, is it a potential risk that this could be? I mean, you know, something really inconvenient when we already have a lot of cars on the road?
I think what we're trying to fix is this, if you take that same population you're talking about, they're getting twenty-five dollar tickets every single day, from December first to March fifteenth, regardless of whether the roads are passable or already taken care of, or there was absolutely no snow at all. So they're getting a twenty-five dollar ticket on a dry road simply because they parked overnight during the winter storm. So they'll spend a lot more over those three and a half months than they will if they make one mistake of leaving their vehicle on a half naked tow. That said, I don't want to tow their vehicles. We know the plate numbers. The plate number, if it goes back to that address, we don't just rip cars away. You know, we try to contact people. So if we've dealt with them before, we have a phone number, we call. If we don't, you go ring a doorbell. If I can't get anyone and Scott absolutely needs that vehicle moved now, then we move it now. We run into that under the present regulations. There are times when Scott or vans, plow operators call them and say, I need this vehicle taken now. It's absolutely, I can't get the intersection. It's preventing me from placing the snow. That car's gone. Okay, our tow operator will take that car away in fifteen minutes. So that occurs now, so nothing's changed in that regard. Language barrier, our notification system, if the people.
Well, that's what I mean. I'm talking about the if. I'm not talking about.
We work with the churches, we work with social organizations. We've let people know how to go on, enter their own phone numbers and indicate for us. If you tell us you're Spanish speaking, you tell us you're Portuguese speaking, our system will give you that message in that language.
I understand.
So it's not, the doors aren't closed, but you come back to the point of, where's the responsibility? The responsibility's not mine. I'm providing you the service. I'm providing you the ability to get the message in your language. We've gone out and we continue to go out to all of these organizations, all the local churches, storefront churches, traditional churches, you know, Roman Catholic churches, the synagogues, and we let people know. You place your information and we'll be able to get hold of you. So it comes back to personal responsibility. If you're gonna leave your car on the street, let us know and we're happy to get the information to you. Also, television as far as notifying, you know, people can convert the language on the TV to their language. They do. So we're gonna, it's gonna be there on the byline that there's a Milford parking emergency, as you see for Boston and Somerville and other places, and here's the time period. And the time period, based on what Scott tells me his needs are.
But right now, there's no guess. People know, and if these people wanna park and pay, and wanna get a ticket every day for twenty-five dollars, I mean, I.
The point is, should you penalize every single resident of the community that doesn't have the ability to park in a parking space or a parking lot, twenty-five dollars every single day because this person doesn't want to go and.
But I thought you're already taking care of that group.
Which group?
A group of people who don't have a parking spot or don't have a driveway.
They pay a hundred dollars, though. They pay a hundred dollars and they still, when it snows, they still have to move their vehicles.
But you know who they are.
Correct. But that's what I'm saying to you. So if people that have a language barrier work with us and provide us their information like those people do, then we know who they are because our system will know who they are and they get the information too. So they're not being treated any differently than anyone else. The people that we deal with as far as the stickers go are generally people that don't live in the community. The healthcare workers, they don't live at their residence. They're coming here to take care of someone that's bedridden, someone that has a medical condition, hospice, whatever the case may be. So those are the free ones. The people that don't have a driveway, we know that they live at X, Y, and Z address. And they give us contact information and backup. If they fail to move the vehicle and Scott needs it moved, it's gone. It's going to be towed.
And I'm not looking for anyone to be treated differently. My question is that if something, some emergency happens and we don't know who these fifteen cars are, then you're gonna get them all out there, but they shouldn't have been there in the first place if we don't change the rules. Maybe I just can't get my, maybe I just disagree, I can't get my head around it. I just, I.
Well, the fifteen cars are gonna be there, they just have a twenty-five dollar ticket on them. And then I now have to get Scott to say, okay, under the state law, tow that vehicle because it's in my way. Versus if I have that emergency and I get information out to people saying I had that emergency. As I said to you, we do it now. If gas company has a gas break and their car's parked there, we have to run the plates, we have to find the people. If we can't, under the present bylaw, the present regulations rather, I've told them, the gas company, you want that car moved, you pay. Pick it up and put it in that space. You're not towing it. Because we didn't post it. So they can move it, but they're paying for it. You know, it's, are there gonna be people that we don't get? Yeah, it happens now. We tow cars every winter.
That's what I'm saying. If someone doesn't mind getting a twenty-five dollar ticket five days in a row, I just don't see how we're gonna get them to move their car in the first place.
Fine, but how?
Might as well pay the five twenty-five.
Well, I think a little bit more, but you're probably close and we're probably right.
I'm just saying five twenty-five dollar tickets, that's all.
Well, they're gonna pay twenty-five dollars for three and a half months. My point is, why should the average resident in the community be paying twenty-five dollars because they don't have a driveway? They're not, have nowhere else to put their car, you know, and don't necessarily, and I'm talking about a home on Winter Street and I don't wanna pick them up because.
No, but those are great, those are great examples.
But it's anecdotal, but it's nevertheless.
Can't take care of those exceptions rather than do the whole thing?
See, I don't think that's the exception. I think that's the norm. I think we're tagging people. Will?
You must know who you're tagging.
Will, I had to tell police officers when I came here, on a Friday night, when different establishments are still open, don't tag cars from midnight to two. On a Saturday night, don't tag cars until after one, even though the regulations say twelve to six. Why? Because you're tagging people that went to a restaurant or a bar. And you're whacking them twenty-five dollar tickets. And now I have fifty people calling the station, coming into the lobby angry, and then who gets to deal with them? Welcome to the parking clerk at the selectmen's office because I'm not touching them. So my point being, to what end? So if we're talking about a handful of people that they failed to come and tell us who they are, or we go and ring their doorbell and they don't wanna answer the door and move their car? Well, you know what, there's six people that ran into a jam versus fifty people every night, a hundred people, a hundred fifty people in a night. We've issued over a hundred tickets in one night. Twenty-five bucks a whack. Your neighbors, your neighbors, my neighbors, people that, the kid came home and, I don't wanna block in mom or dad, I'll leave it in the cul-de-sac, I'll leave it on the street, I'll leave, here's your twenty-five dollar present. I think that's right, if there's no snow. You're running to.
Oh, and that's where you had me at the beginning when I first got it. And you're making, you're making your argument. I appreciate you putting up with me. But there was some things that, you know, that, your last few comments are probably what did it. Because I mean, to me, that's also an exception or using, you know, or changing till one AM or whatever it is. To me, there's, there's other things we could do than just open this up. I'm just afraid for some reason that we're gonna have cars on Main Street that shouldn't be there or we're not gonna be able to get, or commercial vehicles. And what are you gonna do? Then you're in the towing business again.
But we're in the towing business now. We do that now. So Scott says, move that vehicle now. I can't plow and because now the curb cuts on Main Street, I can't do this. That truck's gone.
I know, those are horrible anyway.
That van's gone. No, I'm saying, that van's gone, that truck is gone. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. I can't clear that intersection because he's too close to it, he's two spaces away. That vehicle's gone. It's towed under the state statute. So my thing is, why are we going to issue over a hundred tickets to people, twenty-five dollars each? Because a handful of people don't wanna tell us who they are, even though we are, we have their plate, we know who they are. I go and ring your doorbell. You don't answer, you don't wanna come on and move your car? All right, go pick it up. So six people get impacted versus a hundred. I'm going with a hundred.
And you're confident with that?
I'm so confident, believe me. I'd stand in concrete. That's how confident I am on this one. Trust me, people aren't gonna be mistreated. We don't mistreat people.
Well, I don't worry about that. You don't, you've never done that. The force doesn't, that's not even a concern. I just.
We're gonna try to reach out to people, get information to them, and we have to ring individual doorbells. If you're not responsive to us, then you created your own burden. But you're gonna get a twenty-five dollar ticket anyway.
I just think, and myself included, I think people are just ultra-sensitive. Because even the last few months, even before I got here, working for this seat, I just heard more and more people say, jeez, I didn't know there were some nice parts of Milford. People who've come out of town. And the one thing that I think people are being sensitive about, and obviously I'm born and bred here, just like my colleagues, those comments bother me for a lot of reasons. But I just don't wanna picture, all of a sudden a storm comes in, we weren't supposed to get this. It turned into a nightmare, which some, which has happened as of recent. And then Milford even has all these cars going down everywhere and you're dealing with, you're dealing with more than six people.
You can turn the argument the other way.
Oh, sure you will.
Oh, I know. You know, I came to this community, great community, and oh my God, I can't park in front of my own house. There's not a drop of snow on the ground. In fact, it's a mild winter, my gra- There's not a drop of snow on the ground. In fact, it's a mild winter. My grass.
And that's the part of your argument I like.
My grass is starting to grow and your cops came by and gave me a twenty-five dollar ticket five days in a row. They tagged my kid's car. Well, the kid came home from college for Thanksgiving, or came home rather after that Christmas, you know, within the time period. And twenty-five dollars, twenty-five dollars, twenty, thank you very much. You cops are awesome. That's what we put up with, and I'm being honest with you. So.
I know.
So, so from that side of it, it's, you know.
That's the side I like.
You know, um, nice parts of Milford. I, listen, I get calls from people that have owned or buy homes in this community all the time. Can you tell me what happens on this street? I print it out for them.
But we know that. We're, we're here every day.
I give them the list of that whole street for three years. I, I black out anything dealing with medicals or personal information, ad- address numbers. Tell them, here's what, nothing significant happened. I, I tell people honestly. I, I'll go anywhere in this community, day or night. Not just me. My daughter, my granddaughter, my kids, my wife. You can go anywhere in this town. So, and that's what I present.
Same here, but we're talking tonight, later after you leave, we're talking about signs because people were, we can't even figure out what looks good and what doesn't and things like that. So it was just an appearance question. And I thought it was a good question that people brought up. So you're sitting here, you're confident. Not this, first time you're putting yourself on the line to back something. So I respect that, but that's the questions I had and I'm almost comfortable personally for.
Don't ask me about signs. I'm not your guy.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, um, let me try to wrap things up. So Tom, let me just kinda get a sense because when I got this, it, it, it looks as though, um, you've taken into account and consideration the improvement in technology and communication and trying to address a problem that quite frankly, we, we've had since the bylaws changed in oh-six, that there is inadequate parking in the town. Um, and it's not just Main Street, and I'm gonna read a couple of things in just a second. Um, and what, what's happening is, because of the inadequate parking, people are being unnecessarily penalized during a great amount of time when there might not be a snow emergency. So the reasoning is, they ought to be able to use the road during that time. So, you know, when I look back on what we did back in oh-six, I mean, just a couple of the complaints that we got, people were not very happy about having to pay a hundred dollars. Um, one, one person wrote to me, I have three grown children with cars that live in my house along with my wife and myself. That's five cars to fit in my driveway. Um, he felt that the cost for a hundred dollar permit for one car was entirely unfair. Um, living in this town for more than twenty years, never having a problem, I think it's unfair that residents should have to pay that much. Um, that's Paula Road, you know, so that, that's not downtown. Um, forty-one Fountain Street. We, we got a complaint. This was the institution with the hundred dollar fee for the privilege. This is just another backdoor tax and I vigorously object to it. My husband and I are senior citizens on a fixed income, and what is the object of this fee if not to generate more income for the police department? So, um, you know, some unnecessary, unwarranted criticism of the police department for something that at that time was, was a way to deal with, with snow emergencies. So I, I understand where you're coming from. Uh, I'm gonna assume that you've obviously communicated with the highway surveyor.
I've, I've talked, I've talked to Scott over the past couple of years even, you know, and looking at this. Uh, and we've talked about Franklin. But, you know, a hundred dollar fee, keep in mind, we're, literally, we're talking about the range of twelve to fifteen stickers. You know, and the least number of stickers you print, the more it costs you. So it's, you know, and not a penny of that comes to the police department. Just, just as parking tickets don't and traffic fines, I mean.
I, I understand that.
Thompson MRC has asked me several times, how much do we bring in in traffic fines? I don't know. I really don't know. I've never asked. I, I couldn't much care. Because I don't have officers go out there to collect funds. I, I haven't go out there to make sure things are safe. And officers in this department will tell you. I've, I've said to them, I prefer warnings. You know, unless something's egregious or, or it's so serious that, you know, someone could have been hurt or, or they were, or there was significant damage. So I, I, that's been my approach. I, I just think this is a point of fairness and, and, you know, I, for me, e- even as a cop, you know, to go out there and give someone a ticket for a winter parking ban and the pavement is bone dry, I, I, that.
And, and, and it has generated a lot of complaints from residents. And parking is a premium. And even two thousand and six, I think there's more and more people like that family on Paula Road where kids have cars, houses built in the seventies or even the eighties don't have, you know, driveways for five cars. So people have to make a choice, uh, in terms of their vehicles. So, I mean, in terms of, um, you know, some of the concerns it will raise, I think they're valid ones, but, you know, as long as you feel comfortable that you have the enforcement abilities for someone who might not get the message that it's gonna snow tomorrow. And, and, and again, they would probably have to live in a cocoon to, to not know in today's world. But you're still confronted with that, even though you have the winter parking ban and even though you see on Channel Five and Seven that there's gonna be snow tomorrow. There are still cars on South Main Street and they've gotta be towed because I see them. Um, so, you know, possibly you could have the same effect and you're gonna deal with it the same way.
They know they're not going to do construction or roofing if the two feet come. If you know it's, they know it's coming, they're not gonna work.
Right, right, right. But it does, it does open up, it does open up the use for, for residents throughout the town uh, without forcing them to pay a hundred dollars per vehicle, right?
And you can only do one per household. So you get that household where you have multiple kids, you know, like me, you know, you have.
I know, I know.
Army, they move away, they move back, they never go away. So it's, you, you, you always have cars. And the question comes is, who shuffles what and who parks where? And, you know, so it's no different. And even in the winter, trust me, you know, my driveway, it, it can drive you crazy because, you know, no, I don't want one of my cruisers going by. And I, I don't want someone seeing a car parked in front of my house. So we run into the same thing, you know, be personally, but I think across the town, it really came down to, you can get information out so quickly today. You know, and I understood the intent of the old regulations. It was, how do we notify people? Well, it's hard. You know, you're jetting that, you know, you know, Channel Five, that was it. So now you can get information out so quickly. Why, why are we tagging cars i- in the, in the winter months? I mean, right up through March.
Well, and, 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 you know, we're, we're penalizing, you know, the vast amount of residents by either forcing them to do something else with the car, which isn't easy, or pay the hundred dollars, oftentimes when the road is clear. So now, under this bylaw, you can declare the snow emergency for as long as you see fit. So you might, you know, it might be Monday and, and there might be a broadcast of snow for Wednesday or Thursday. In your discretion, you could say, hey, you know, Monday night, it's twelve midnight, no, no parking. Um, and, and keep that parking ban for as long as the town may need to remove all the snow. It could go more than the life of the storm. It could go a week or two or three weeks after that to allow the highway department to remove that snow.
It's dependent upon the condition. So it's, it's making sure that you have those conversations. You know, and as you know, we all have a great relationship, the department has. So it's working with Scott, it's working with the fire chief to make sure that their needs are being met. You know, what does Scott need as far as clearing snow? But it may not even be a snow emergency, as I said, you know, you, we had that microburst down, you know, when Pago Pago was there that hit towards the Hollison Line, went across to the residences opposite, uh, the one oh-nine rental place. And, uh, that whole neighborhood, I mean, I went to a heart attack call up in that neighborhood and in, in order to get to the gentleman's house, I had to drive over another guy's lawn who was not very happy with me. We went and rebuilt his lawn after the huge oak that fell over and blocked the road was taken away. Scott took care of that. I told him, I towed the guy's lawn up. So I could get, and I was the first one in. So, you know, you can have an emergency, but I, I can notify Connect C T Y on my phone. I can Twitter from my phone to every single news agency. I can send emails to every single news agency. I'm talking electronic media as well as, you know, these gentlemen, print media, and get information out as quickly as possible. You know, Ed Thompson, you all know, I mean, that's as quick as a phone call. So you can get information out so quickly now to people, particularly the, the larger media, where you couldn't before. And they jump right on it. They, you know, they're thrilled to have it. Something's going on, they want it. So that's where I was coming from.
Okay. Well, let's see. We have a proposal. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the recommendation of, not approve, recommend for, uh, changing the bylaw and having it at the next town meeting.
No, this is traffic rules and regs.
Oh, that's right. That's right. We can do it ourselves. All right. So, uh, the proposed amendment, Section ten Emergency Parking Ban, um, I'd recommend adopting as, uh, as recommended by the, uh, police chief.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second it. Um, I just wanna add that, uh, still a little concerned about more of the congested, smaller streets. But, uh, I, you know, you saying it'll be good, so thank you.
It's not lost on me.
Okay, thank you.
Motion made and seconded. Is any more discussion? Not all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Did you say there was something else I had?
Yeah, there is.
I'm still causing more trouble.
A little tight here. Um, we, we have, uh.
Oh, boxing out.
Sit down. Yeah, get back in the cement there. Um, yeah, we, we, we have a memo. Um, actually, a number of memos, but you've recommended to box out the intersection of Main Street at South Bow Street and Park Street. Uh, given the positive impact in boxing out Main Street at Hayward, uh, local residents suggested boxing out Main Street at South Bow and Park Street. And, uh, you're in agreement it should be done. It'll have a positive impact on traffic flow, result in safer movement of traffic that is coming from South Bow Street to Park Street or Main Street Route sixteen westbound. South Bow Street experiences a high volume of traffic that is attempting to make these maneuvers. Boxing out the intersection will likely provide a better line of sight for motorists traveling on Main Street westbound from the lights at Exchange Street. And, um, Rick circulated that to the highway surveyor uh, and also the town engineer, and both of them, um, concur with the recommendation. So.
I, I think, yeah, I think we look at Hayward Street, it, it has had a positive impact. I, I, I believe, and I've been through there. I go through there twice, three, four times a day. Um, many people, if not the majority, do, do the courtesy of allowing vehicles to turn. And if you take a look at anyone that's been up, you know, you know, coming out onto, you know, cars headed to park, you, you run a risk there because you don't have a good line of sight, uh, because vehicles coming westbound.
Arc vehicles are blocking the site.
Yeah, I think if we box it out though.
Very treacherous.
It is.
Yeah, I think we box it out. We put the right signage, uh, people are on notice. Uh, people coming eastbound, they tend to catch it and they'll, they'll give you the benefit of the doubt. Uh, I think it'll reduce the potential of crashes and, and people being hurt, but I think it'll facilitate the movement of traffic, uh, on that intersection, not only off the side streets, but on the main street itself.
Yeah, I, I agree. Whenever I come that way, and I do frequently, uh, eastbound, um, I, I'll always stop right there at South Bow Street, particularly when the light is red. I mean, there's no, yeah, yeah, why, why rush up another, you know, twenty, forty feet, you know, to sit in the line of traffic and then block South Bow Street from, from cars that wanna go to Park Street? It's just ridiculous, but people do, so hopefully this'll stop.
Likewise, you come in eastbound from the station, you wanna turn onto Park and, and vehicles coming west, they block. Yeah, we box it out, we do the right signage, people heads up, uh, good markings. It, it, it may help. I, I, I think it may have a positive impact. To what degree? Maybe not as much as Hayward Street because you don't have the issue with the parked vehicles as Bill mentioned. Uh, but nevertheless, I, I think it's gonna have a positive impact.
Let's draw you.
You're good.
You know, I, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to support the recommendation of the police chief, and it's also supported by highway surveyor and town, town engineer uh, as regarding boxing out of the intersection.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second this one wholeheartedly.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? I didn't know if you wanted to say anything while I'm.
No, I'm all set.
Okay. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Is that the only trouble I cause?
Good job, good job. I don't know. Let's see. What else can we do here? Have a good night. Good night. Thank you, Tom. All right, let's go to Town Administrator's Report. Rick?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Just a few items tonight. Um, just an update on the senior center. As you know, a tree fell on the roof of the senior center last week ago Sunday. Did cause damage to the roof. Um, the work to repair the roof will be done this week and is expected to take two days, and I'm informed that the work will start tomorrow. So it'll be, uh, completed, uh, this week. Um, if you may recall, some time ago, unfortunately, we, uh, looked to, uh, change the sign, uh, four ninety-five sign on Route sixteen and Cedar Street. I'm happy to report, we finally have received the smaller route marker shields and the hardware from the state. So, uh, the highway department, Scott, will be installing the new signs closer to Hayward Street. Residents in the area were consulted and, as you know, agreed. So finally, this will get. Uh, just an update, uh, friends of the Milford Upper Charles Trail have awarded a grant of eight thousand dollars to the Milford Commission on Disability to be used to enhance accessibility for people with low vision and mobility challenges along the Milford Upper Charles Trail. The commission, uh, will be working with the parks department, town engineer, and highway surveyor to construct structures that will allow those individuals to use and enjoy the trail. So I'm happy to report that. And just a reminder that the warrant for the October twenty-sixth town meeting closes on Thursday, September twenty-fourth. Articles to be considered for the warrant should be submitted by that date. And that's all I have.
Yeah, I, I, I think the conservation commission has, uh, jurisdiction over that.
Yes, they will be involved also. That's a good point. Yes, thank you.
I didn't wanna see them left out.
No, no, they will be involved. Bob Buckley has been involved, uh, will be involved and has been informed. Yes, thank you. I should have mentioned.
No, great idea, and I know Harold has communicated with each of us to talk about some of the things that he'd like to see.
Do you have any other questions?
No questions.
Well, no, no questions. Nor do I. Rick, thank you. Um, under all business, we have correspondence from the Algonquin, uh, Gas Transmission Pipeline, uh, Spectra Energy Corp. Jerry has given us a, uh, package of information. And, um, all three of us, along with the town administrator, town council, uh, Representative Fernandez, and some interested residents.
Senator Fatman was there or there was?
Oh, I didn't say he was there.
Yeah, he came by later.
Okay. Senator Fatman was there. That was at the, uh, the kind of the informational open house that they had at the, um, Sheraton, uh, is it, what is it?
Doubletree.
Is it Doubletree?
Keeps changing, man.
I can't keep up with these hotels. Um, I know where it is. Um, yeah, and that was at five thirty tonight. So, um, I, I don't know. I guess any questions, comments out of it?
Just a quick comment, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I think that, um, you know, as anything with, uh, large construction, uh, it's a gas line. It's intended to follow the transmission lines, but there are areas of, uh, certainly, uh, uh, environmental sensitivity. There's, uh, the Charles River that it would have to pass through, over or under. Uh, there's our, uh, construction in our, uh, water recharge area. Uh, so certainly there are environmental, uh, considerations. I think there are safety considerations um, that we have to be mindful of. And, uh, I'm certain that as this, uh, project goes through the federal funding process, again, it's not a local funding, a lo- local permitting process. It goes through the federal permitting process. That will be intervenors in that process so that, uh, we can have our say and, uh, make sure that our concerns are heard.
Will?
No, I'll just add that it was very informative and it was at least good to see the actual mapping out stage by stage. So now we know where it's gonna be. Appreciated that, yeah.
Yeah, uh, their attorney, John Bonzal, I spoke with him and, uh, town council. Jerry has, uh, hard copies of the maps which, uh, he'll disseminate, disseminate to all of us. And it breaks it down real clear in terms of the lots affected and, uh, how this line is going to, to, to run. Um, it's basically kind of a three hundred foot study area that they have, uh, along the, uh, national grid easement line um, for their surveying to start. In terms of process, I think they're looking to file a preliminary application with this Federal Energy Regulatory Commission in November. It'll be about a year of some preliminary work, which will include, uh, I think, a lot of, uh, town meetings, public hearings, that kind of stuff in terms of affecting residents, um, surveying so they can get the exact area down. And then I think they're looking to file their formal application sometime later in 2016, so it's something that we'll continue to take a look at and have a personnel review. Rick, have you brought this to the attention of the Town Engineer?
I actually, on September 3rd, myself, the Town Engineer, Town Planner, and I met with, I don't think you met the gentleman tonight, but Eric Boyington, the right, he's the right-of-way supervisor for Algonquin Gas, so he's the point person for the survey request that you saw in your packet, so, yes, they have, they will be involved, and I expect Vani to be very involved as the process is ongoing.
Okay.
Yes, they are involved.
Let us know if there's anything we need to do beyond that. Any old business, Bill?
No old business tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Will?
I do, thank you. Actually, Mr. Visconti brought it up about the, about Beach Street and truck traffic and things of that nature. Rick and I met briefly last Friday and just talked about the next, tried to find a day that I'm in town next to sit with Scott, Christopher, Vani, and Rick, just to see, we pretty much, you know, figured that vibration testing is probably, and most likely not, an option, so we just wanted to talk about the road itself and just to see if we can finally, again, something, you know, you folks have been working on for some time, see if there's something that we can finally come to some certain type of closure, one way or the other on it. But I just wanted to mention that, one, I had planned on doing that anyway, but Mike had brought that up, so, you know, there's a lot of things that happen, as you know, behind the scenes. We can't do everything here in our biweekly meetings. But Rick and I will get together on that, as well as we talked even more briefly on moving, still talking about the Personnel Board and HR Director and, you know, forming some group possibly to look at that. So, it is being discussed, we are talking about it. I just, until there's something to present, there's no sense in taking the time.
Keep us posted.
Will do, thank you.
New business. First item is a proposed zoning bylaw amendment from the Planning Board. Basically, brings a portion of the zoning bylaw into the new OR or BP districts. Need a motion to refer this to the Planning Board for a public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made, is there a second?
A second for purposes of discussion.
Okay.
Do we know, we created this district... Last year.
Well, it's two districts.
The OR and BP? Okay. And I'm just trying to figure out why retrospectively we're going back at it. It doesn't say. It doesn't say in the rationale. Says during the course of adopting the changes to create the OR, residential and BP zoning districts, including rezoning, and this comes from Larry Duncan, right? Various properties in the new districts, an update to the sign location allowed for signage was overlooked. Was it just simply a miss, and is there anything else missing? It sounds like we didn't go through it as closely as we could have. Is there anything else that we need to update?
Not to my knowledge. It was an oversight, though, yes.
It was, it was an oversight, okay.
Yes.
And now we're correcting a mistake that was missing in the first rezoning of that. Okay, I got it.
Well, actually, when you look at that, our existing zoning bylaw, so the sign size restrictions, when you look at Section 3.9.2.1, it specifically itemizes four districts, RA, RB, RC, RD, similar to the other two sections. So, what happened was, when they put in these zoning districts in the bylaw, they didn't coordinate the cross-reference to those particular line items in a totally separate section of the zoning bylaw that dealt with signs.
And so, per Jerry's guidance...
So, that's, that's kind of what happened.
In the absence of a signed zoning bylaw for that particular district, we're obligated to, as a result of the oversight, approve any sign that comes in?
Hmm, no.
So, I want to understand.
The only thing that doesn't apply is Section 3.9.2, the sign size restrictions. Other parts of the signed bylaw, 3.9.1, general sign provisions, which apply to the entire town, apply. It's just this one...
So, any size, let me say it that way.
Yeah, Section 3.9.2, sign size restrictions, would not apply.
So, sign size, we'd have to approve any sign size that goes in, as long as it doesn't conflict with another aspect of our bylaw? Okay, I got it. I know that this was discussed with the hospital, I know they have various requirements to be met before town meeting, I know that those permits need to be approved in order for them to open, and those are requirements of the state, so how have you worked that with Jerry and, with Council and the building inspector?
Yeah, we have, we have spoken with the hospital, we've spoken with the building inspector, Jerry was involved, and they will be able to, in fact, I think they have already applied for their sign requests, and so there should not be an issue there.
Good, good. That's the piece, you know, part of the solution is getting, getting the town meeting approval, but their requirements were ahead of that...
Yeah.
And needed additional consideration.
Correct.
And that was my concern several weeks ago, okay.
There should not, there is no issue there now.
They're all set, yeah, they're all set.
Again, I think they have already applied.
Yeah. I talked to Frank Sabrin at Kellyburg.
Right, they signed off on them.
And then, like you said before, it's the sign size regulations...
Okay.
That were not cross-referenced when the two district bylaws were set up. If you look at our zoning bylaw, you know, the book's like that, so it's difficult, I think, to envision all of the other sections that a particular new district might touch on.
If I may.
Yeah.
No, and actually, just between the both of you speaking, you answered a lot of the questions, that's why I was anxious to get on this, and I think it's important, too, that, you know, Bill mentioned that this was an oversight, I mean, we're all human, but this one could have had, could have had some real problems, and then the other thing that, that you folks, Bill, you mentioned as well, was, you know, hospitals obviously have their own requirements by the Mass Department of Public Health, when it comes to their emergency departments and things like that, sign requirements, whether they're illuminated, how they're illuminated, the visibility, things of that nature, so obviously, I imagine that that, they're obviously not going to have a problem with any of those things, because those, I imagine, are just superseded.
No issues there, there should be...
Yeah. I think they're very, from what I've seen, they're very comfortable with the signs put forward. I think they're, I think they're satisfied.
Okay.
Again, this is a very limited section of the signed bylaw that was not updated to reflect new zoning districts. It's tough, you gotta, you know, go back to the signed bylaw and go to the district, you know, to cross-reference it, but when you do that, you can, you can see what didn't happen. So, we need to have a motion for, we have a motion, right?
Yeah.
Motion seconded, any more discussion on this?
No, I'm all set. All set.
All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. We covered Items 2 and 3.
Yes.
We have recommendations, and Rick?
Yes.
I'm going to turn it over to you to help me out on this, because I feel so great tonight.
Okay, we'll go quick with the position of Program Coordinator at the Senior Center was advertised in the Daily News, posted on the website. Six applications. Senior Center Director Sue Clark, Council on Aging Chairman Ed Roth, and I reviewed the applications. We interviewed two people for the position. There were three, one originally that was supposed to be interviewed, withdrew. We believe the most qualified individual for the position is Nancy Potter. Ms. Potter began working at the Senior Center as a volunteer in June of this year. She's performed many of the duties, such as working at the front desk, welcoming the seniors, answering the phone, working at special events. In July 2014, she began working as the Program Coordinator when the prior individual left. She's been planning and coordinating house events and outside trips. She's currently working on the 2015 Health Expo. Sue Clark has recommended Ms. Potter for this position. If you approve the recommendation, I would request that she be placed at Grade 3 Step 1 with a starting hourly rate of $19.31, and she will begin working there tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we accept the recommendation from Sue Clark.
Seconding.
Your second, yeah. Yeah, I will go along with that, obviously. I got a chance to meet her for the first time. Will and I were at the VFW 9/11 Ceremony, and Ms. Potter did a lot to coordinate that, and it was a very nice event. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to, well, we've got another appointment, so, another recommendation, right?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't we do that and then... No, it's in general, as it relates to personnel.
Oh, okay.
So, I can do it after the second one.
Okay.
The second position was an Administrative Assistant at the Senior Center, also advertised in the Daily News, also posted on the website. We received 10 applications for that position. The same three people I mentioned before reviewed the applications. Three candidates were selected to interview for the position. We believe the most qualified individual for this position is Susan Cadron. She has been working at the Senior Center as a clerk for the past 19 months or so. She demonstrated she's fully capable of performing the duties required for this position. She also has worked in the Shine Program at the Senior Center as a data entry specialist. Sue Clark, Senior Center Director, is also recommending Ms. Cadron for the position. If you were to approve of the recommendation, I would also request that she be placed at Grade 3 Step 1 with a starting hourly rate of $19.31, and that she be allowed to begin working on September 15th tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we accept the recommendation of Sue Clark and appoint Ms. Cadron to the Senior Center as a clerk. I'm sorry, as the Administrative Assistant.
Is there a second?
Seconding.
Okay, any discussion? Not all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Bill, did you want to bring something up on these?
Yeah, you know, one of the things that I think would be helpful in giving guidance to this board, and something I'd like to see, is a process by which we could go by where, when we make appointments, we understand what that position is, where it came from, its origin, right? And that is a result of a vacancy, because what I want to understand is, and it isn't always necessarily clear, and if we look through this paperwork, it isn't necessarily clear. I had to inquire and dig in deeper, but it is a result of vacancies. These aren't new ads.
These are not, no, one was...
But it, but it isn't, it isn't always clear. One's a grant position, one is a... But, you know, I think as we add, when we add personnel, what I'd like to do is formalize a process where the difference between somebody making a replacement versus somebody looking for a new ad to their department is clearly outlined and clearly justified with rationale. Because frankly, when it's replacement, it should be somewhat academic, because it's not a new budget line item, but if somebody's looking to add, there's a different threshold they think somebody would need to go through to make that justification. That's just a comment.
Sure. Mr. Chairman?
I'll take it, yep.
While we're, while we're speaking about personnel, and specifically tonight at the Senior Center, at some point, and I guess I'll add this to my list, we certainly all have them, but I think at some point, this board needs to seriously have a conversation about whether it's an Administrative Assistant making one of these part-time positions, full-time. I know we kind of briefly talked about the staffing model down at the Senior Center, at least while I was on the FinCom. I know I was pretty vocal just about some personnel coming out of the formula grant, rather than being on the actual town side. That's a pretty big department. I don't certainly get down there as much as I wish I could, working in Boston every day, but it's a busy place. And so, every time I do go down, I want to make sure I get on, I get a tour, and, you know, just to see it in action, see the new exercise room, saw the weightlifting equipment, saw it again, but just the staff, that there's all these, the people that, it's a number of volunteers, but then also the staff members, they're all part-time, they're all, you know, just balancing the workload, and quite honestly, the schedules, and when someone's out, and things like that, so I guess I'll just maybe, if we can put that as an action item or something, at some point, have a, you know, have a conversation, especially, you know, going into next year when we know what monies are possibly available. I just think some of these departments are pretty big. There are smaller departments with a full-time staff member, and that one is just, it's a real busy place. And I think, I think even our seniors would be better served, and you two probably know far more about it than I do, but it's just, when I have been fortunate enough to be there, it's a busy, busy place.
And I think in those cases is exactly what I was talking about, because I think in those cases, the department heads can present to us what their staffing model looks like, because I'm not sure that any one of us could talk at any great length...
Absolutely.
About exactly how many people are hired, how many full-time, how many are 19 hours, how many are 40 hours, and what their models look like and what their justification is in making the ad. Now, I also, I also want to look at those requests broader to say, hey, there are other people that have been looking for staffing. Is it the most vocal that gets the ad? Is it the person who's been planning that gets the ad? So, I think we ought to look at this, and, and, and similar to, similar to capital, right? Let's get our staffing models. I don't know that I could talk to, I could talk to a few departments, because they're small, but exactly what the org chart looks like. And so, I think, I think this is what, when we talk about HR and HR departments, this is what they do, right? And so, because I know there's other departments looking for people as well, and if we're entertaining discussions about one department getting a new ad, we should start a process that makes sure that it's equitable, right?
And I certainly don't have a, have a problem with that. I don't mind looking at anything holistically, and, but again, this was just an observation of mine when I was there, and I'm seeing everyone buzzing in the office, so I just asked how this one, how many, this one's 19 hours, this one's a volunteer. I mean, it also makes it that, you know...
This is a grant, this is...
This is a grant, and you know, if you can, if we can afford it, then that's kind of takes away the argument. But sometimes we can, and we just make different choices, but again, getting things off of formula grants also, if we can pick up a few more hours and something on this side, you know, granted, there's a, there's a price tag to that with the benefits, obviously, it's a much bigger picture. But if it comes a time that we can afford something like that, her budget also gives her more to work with, in this particular case anyway, based on personnel coming out of formula grants. There's a lot of argument now that, at the state level, there's people getting paid out of capital money versus operational, which is never a good idea.
Terrible.
But the Commonwealth of Massachusetts operated like that for a long time. Really, sooner or later, if a grant runs out, we're going to lose a half-time admin, so there's no one down there? So, I'd just like to have a bigger picture.
And it's exactly, and I'm glad you said that, because it's exactly why the state gets into $2.5 billion deficits in the last quarter of the year, and why our bond rating is what it is, and why we're out there bonding, bonding money at short interest rates. That's the difference, I think, that are planning.
Well, I mean, that, that's fine, you know, she gets paid out of the formula grant, which comes in every year, but Sue's been advocating for that to be full-time since she's been aboard, and Ruth Ann before her.
And see, that's the history that I appreciate, because I would know that.
You know, haven't been able to get out of the batter's box, you know, with the FinCom and the various levels, but, you know, Sue has the plan, so ask her to submit it tomorrow, Rick, and we'll look at it the next meeting. Any other new business? Bill?
No, no new business.
Do you want to add on there?
Yeah, the add-on.
Oh, I'm sorry, hold on here. Oh, my gosh, if I forget this...
Yeah, you'd be in trouble.
I'm not going to get any chicken and roast potatoes when I go. So, this is the Plains Reunion for September 27, 2015, at 11:30 to 4:00 p.m., and looking for a all-alcohol license outdoors.
Mr. Chairman?
Seconding.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous. Now, any new business? Will?
Yes. I just wanted to mention that I had the, I had the time, fortunately, to make it to the Miss and Matt Foundation Charity Walk that was held at the, that started at the town park, at the bandstand. Obviously, it was a very sad occasion, because it was in honor of Matthew Bertulli, who passed away through opiate overdose, but there was a huge amount of people there. Chief O'Laughlin, who's appointed to the State Opiate Panel, or I'm not sure what the full name of it is, was there and spoke, and it was, it was a good thing, because more and more people are talking about this, and they need to be. You even see, unfortunately, in obituaries now, you see, they just don't say he passed away unexpectedly, or she did, they actually bring it to light. away unexpectedly, or she did, they actually bring it to light. And I think it's much like mental illness, it's now being talked about more frequently, and it should be, because it's, it's affecting every walk of life and every, every group of people. Another event held later, the same day, was the Seventh Annual Mickey Ward Bike Run, who was raising money for a young girl named Brooklyn who's fighting a horrible disease. There were about 200 bikes. Again, these are very successful in town, and it brings out an amazing group of people, and I just wanted to publicly recognize Erica Robertson and Roger Dupuy. They co-chair the Mickey Ward team here in Milford, and they started seven years ago with 13 bikes, and now they're, like I said, almost at 200, and it was, it was family-friendly. I saw people I haven't seen in years, all their kids were running around. It was just very successful, and I wanted to just, again, bring that. I'm gonna try, like I said, to, if I have the chance to be somewhere, I want to let, again, let people know the positive things that, that Milford people are doing and have always done, and it was, both of them were something very good to be a part of. So, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Great, great. Correspondence, we have a memo from Building Commissioner, basically requesting direction from this board on how we would like to have him proceed to reply to inquiries in terms of violations of the current zoning bylaw. While the Planning Board is working to come up with a revised sign regulation bylaw, we have a proposed draft of that sign regulation bylaw. I'm disappointed that that's not going to be available for the special town meeting. Apparently, the Planning Board is targeting the annual town meeting, and I think it's just going to further exacerbate the issues that we have with, with signs in the town. So, in light of John Erickson's memo, what's, what's the pleasure of the board?
Yeah, my suggestion is, I think it's a, I think it's an opportunity to sit and have a discussion with John. I'd recommend we have him at our next meeting.
Will?
Yeah, actually, I just spoke to Rick with that earlier, that I think having John come to the next meeting, if he can, or, or, I guess it's not a, a huge rush, obviously, for town meeting, but obviously, still, since this is something he's dealing with. To a certain extent, I understand the need, looking for direction from the Town Administrator and then from, from us, but also, what I'd like to have a conversation with John about is where, what he thinks. You know, in my line of work, we're called the subject matter experts, or resident expert. I think that not only is he the Building Commissioner, but he's also, or at least how, how I look at him in that office, is also an advisor to this board. So, I would very much just like to hear, you know, I guess firsthand, what he's experiencing, as well as what possible solutions, or even if maybe this board disagrees in the end, but where he would like it to go, and how he foresees moving it forward if it was solely up to him. So, I'm very interested in his input.
Okay, why don't we ask him to come? I'm not sure what the agendas look like, but we'll have him come in, 28, and let's have Town Planner come in on that as well, so he can address the progress of the new, new sign bylaw. Okay. Okay, and the last item that we have is a report from John to Rick about the Neighborhood Task Force and their attention on Main Street, specifically the mixed-use properties, and it was a one violation, which is a recurrence of a prior violation at 94 Main Street, in which an illegal dwelling unit was created. The property was a subject of numerous violations, and the office took court action versus the prior owner. It is recurring for this address, it is the first violation under the new owner. The new owner is apparently cooperating with the office to bring the property back in compliance. And any comments, questions? Not, that's all I have. Bill, do you have anything else?
I don't.
Will?
Brian, if I could just add to Rick. Rick, could we check out 32 West Street, too? 32 West Street? I got actually two phone calls...
Sure.
Earlier in the week, or I should say, late last week, regarding that. If you could pass that along to John and Lori, too, that'd be great.
What's, what's that all about?
It's a complaint?
Yeah, what's the violation?
I'm not sure, you know, what, at what level I, I talk about on TV, but some reported overcrowding, some damage to the exterior of the property rather recently.
32, you said?
32 West. Anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
We do not have an executive session.
I'd make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Seconded.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, and good evening.